Sorry that interrupted the golf talk.
It's okay, I'm just making conversation and getting excited about spring and summer.
Really?
Are you a good golfer?
You know, I like to think I can go as often as I can.
Oh, good for you.
But I, which is not fun.
Did you threaten?
Whenever I can, absolutely whenever we go.
They reported to put the bump out.
I think that's what they're referring to.
No, they put the bump out since she was eight.
You mean with the road?
Yeah.
Good for her.
What's next? I really don't know. I don't, I personally don't ever, I have no memory of that.
Even a playful, she's playing the red tees and then. She's already there. Come on, that's great.
Thank you, now can you use my paper? Okay, at six o'clock, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. If everyone could please join us in taking the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first on tonight's agenda is the approval of this evening's agenda. Commissioners, would you like to add anything or take away any items from this evening's agenda? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to public comment. Is there anyone joining us this evening who would like to make public comment to something that is not on the agenda? So something that is not on tonight's agenda. I'm sorry, I can't see. No, okay, thank you. All right, so hearing none, I will close public comment and move on to the report of mayor and city commissioners, and I will start here with Commissioner Arnhorst, do you have anything to add?
I have nothing to add, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Nor do I.
Wonderful.
Just a reminder that I think next week starts our curbside pickup at the city, is that correct?
Correct.
So yardways, while a lot of people are gone on spring break, those who are here, you do have that ability now to put your spring leaves and other things from your gardens out by the curb.
Wonderful, thanks for that reminder.
In a bag.
In a container, not in the street, though.
Not in the street, though.
That's important.
I have a question, what about branches? Because I know some, I lost some branches over the, with the storm and whatever.
Yep, you can place them out in the right of way, not in the street.
Okay.
Six-foot lengths, less than 50 pounds.
Okay, thank you, thanks, great reminder. Fifty-one and going back, right. Thanks for that reminder, Commissioner Wesley?
Nothing for me, thank you.
And I don't have anything to add, other than City Manager Shay and I had a chance to visit the middle school last week and speak to their government club, and it was just, I think, a wonderful experience. The kids had a lot of questions, and it was just really exciting to see their enthusiasm. So thank you, City Manager Charles, for joining me.
Thank you. Just a couple things, as I noted last week in the weekly update, Doug Park construction is underway. It's kind of a, borders on a little bit of a war zone over there right now, but we're taking advantage of the weather and getting an early start on that. As far as playground improvements go, we are confirmed April 14th, it will be the start of that. The school sent out a letter last week to all the parents, letting them know what's gonna be shut down, phasing things of that nature, so.
Bless you.
It's coming at us very quickly and gonna be running around, Derek's gonna be running around like a maniac for the next nine months or so. I know some commissioners have gotten an inquiry about Remington Field. We are working with our outside consultants, Brian Newhoff, we do hope to have a report from them shortly on potential options and address some of the drainage concerns out there. We have installed or reactivated, I guess, a pump that tried to help with some of that. It's just, as I think everybody's aware, that field is very close to the water table, so it's, we get a wet spring, it's really tough, but we are continuing to work on that. And that is all I have.
Great, thank you. We'll move on to the regular agenda items. First item on tonight's agenda is to consider approval of alternative number one with superior asphalt for a total amount of $140,725 to include the following design changes for Inglewood Drive and Gorham Drive, Martin Luther King Junior Street and Rosewood Avenue, as well as Martin Luther King Junior Street and Gladstone Avenue. And introduction for that will be Deputy City Manager Doug LaFave.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Commissioners, I'm gonna first, we'll tackle the Inglewood and Gorham one first here, I'm gonna put up the redesign. So what we, what we do, our staff does and our consultants do when we're looking at our Millen overlay street projects each year, we look at reported concerns from residents, things that staff may have identified, amongst other variables. One of the things that we look at, too, is geometry, when, obviously with the age of our city and our, our street network, when some areas were laid out or platted, we don't necessarily have the most ideal geometry at some of our intersections, and so what we try to do is look at reasonable, low-cost alternatives to perhaps improve, not always in the most ideal fashion, make improvements. And what we've done in the past is kind of a mix of, of hosting some open houses where we look at some different options, invite the public to come in and look at them, and vet them with our civil and traffic engineering consultants. In the more recent past, we've had some success with doing some more tactile pilot projects where we were able to get residents really in the neighborhoods and around the area to really be able to try something and give us that direct feedback of, hey, this was confusing, this didn't make sense, or I like this, or I don't like that, and we're able to gather that feedback, go back to our engineering team, and then look at some modifications for designs, and to present them to you. For each one of the, each one of the designs tonight, as you saw from the five-year crash and accident history, we don't really have anything of any, of any concern that would make us really implore the city commission to approve any of these improvements this evening. However, we wanted to make sure that, given the cycle of construction, for a Millen overlay project and then associated with pavement preservation, we're probably not gonna be back doing road construction in these areas for probably somewhere between 10 and 15 years. So we wanna look at some things, and if we have an opportunity to do some improvements, this is the most cost-effective time to do it. With this particular intersection, we laid out an engagement pilot, demonstration pilot, where we allowed for, put in a traffic island essentially, and allowed for two-way traffic on each one of those legs. Feedback we got from residents was, in general, and you've seen all the emails included, with the PAC materials and subsequent materials as well, the feedback we got was that, that sort of two-way in each leg was somewhat confusing, concern for conflict points, those types of things, and I'll let the civil and traffic engineer come up after I'm done with introduction, and they can get into more details with you. But, so based on that feedback, the redesign that's written in the materials here, this east-westbound, northern leg, I'll call it, or it would be westbound only one-way traffic, so it's been narrowed down because of the two-way confusion, so that redesign is for one-way here with stop signs at this location here. So if you're coming through, it's kind of a slot design, would stop you here, and then it was reoriented to have a more perpendicular connection point to Inglewood for the two-way traffic. So that just sort of lays out the changes based off the feedback we received from the community on that particular item. And then I guess I'll just go through each one of these real quick, and then if you have any questions for me, we can get the consultants up here, too, to answer your additional questions, if that works.
Could I just ask a quick question about, so you said it's a one-way going west and then going east, it's two-way around this way, right? And then, okay.
This would be right here, you have two ways, so you have the option to come in here, come out here.
Okay.
So this, this, this triangle, when you look at this, this island compared to the original one, the one that's in, right now, still out there for as part of the demonstration pilot, you'll see that change. You really gotta look into the finer details of the plan sheets, that's why we thought the engagement thing was a little, is generally a bit more helpful for the community. That way you can see that that's actually been narrowed and would be one-way through there to limit that, those conflict points from that one angle, and then kind of modified to align more perpendicular to Inglewood.
Would there be a stop sign traveling east on Gorham to Inglewood? To where you're coming?
Yeah, right, right here there would be, yes.
Okay.
Yep, here and then here. So stops from westbound here, and then if you're coming eastbound, it'd be stopped here.
Okay.
So if you were to come in on Gorham heading east and want to continue heading east on Inglewood, you'd sort of come up to that right angle and take a left to get on Inglewood?
Right, so yeah, so the traffic would be if you're heading eastbound, you'd pull up here, you'd stop at stop sign, and then you decide which direction you wanted to go. If you're heading westbound, you technically have the option to take this, this one-way here to the stop signs here, or you could turn.
The pilot that's out there right now, though, is not, is not this shape, okay.
Right, and so that, again, that's sort of the iterative process we took with getting something out there and getting that feedback from the public, and then being able to sort of look at those concerns, and then do some design improvements with our professional civil and traffic engineering team.
And where, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Where would the crosswalk be, or crosswalks be?
Right, so, and Mr. Halverson can speak to this, we have a lot of crosswalk locations with, with obviously non-compliant ADA ramps, just based on the time, the last time we were through these particular neighborhoods. So when we're going through, we're generally trying to pick up and upgrade all the crosswalk locations to ADA compliant. The other thing we look at, that we see in a lot of our neighborhoods, is we may have an ADA or a ramp that sends pedestrians into like someone's driveway, which is the case here. So what we're looking at is, is shifting the crossings to this location here, keeping them away from that intersection, because right now, it's right here on the corner, and it sends them right to this driveway here, and then also to this driveway right here. So you're sending pedestrians right in when someone's backing out, that's obviously not something you wanna do. So those improvements and why they're shifted to where they are is why we need to move them to those locations.
So that would be, you just have the one crosswalk, the new one, that's ADA compliant, that would be going across Inglewood, that's?
Right here.
Okay.
Right now, right now, it sends, if you look at it, it sends people right to this driveway, and then this side here, it sends them to this driveway right here.
So my.
So we're shifting it over a little bit to the west.
Okay, so, like, I appreciate that there's this new crosswalk that would be going across Inglewood, and it would be appropriate with the, with the ADA compliance and things. But what about, is there a crosswalk on the west of the island? To the, toward the west of, or no, excuse me.
To the east.
To the east of the island? Is there a crosswalk over there?
Not in this particular area, but further, further to the east, there are, yes, there are improvements, we'll be updating ramps in that direction, too.
Can you give me some sort of an idea about how far down to the east that, where that crosswalk would be located?
It would be the next, the next street.
Okay.
Which is gonna be Oxford.
Oxford.
Yep.
Currently, Gorham to Inglewood, is that a yield? Before you put the, before you put the traffic stuff in there, was it a yield that controlled that?
It's a yield that comes off of, when you're coming off of Gorham, I think the yield that's.
Right, for westbound, it's, you go right through, yeah.
Okay.
And the yield, and I don't believe there's a yield on eastbound Inglewood. There isn't. No. I, just for, as commissioners, where I live, a couple blocks out of there, so this is where my wife and I traverse both with our cars and walk this area quite a bit, so we're, Doug brought this up, it was like, oh, I know exactly where you're at, so.
Right, and again, we've looked at some other alternatives, too, so we looked at, and our engineering consultant's team can speak to that a little bit more, too, but we did look at, we've done several mini-traffic circles in the community, too, looking at this location. The problem is with the, with the real estate available and the location of driveways, we would have conflicts with driveways. The other piece is, we're also, again, trying to make some improvements without impacting underground utilities, we'd have some storm, some storm work that would have to be done around that, which would drive up costs, too. So the challenge with relocating driveways is just something we couldn't overcome when we looked at that alternative, so that was something, that was one of the options we looked at, too, and really, we came back to at least a traffic island approach, just because we couldn't, we couldn't eliminate those conflicts and those concerns.
Well, I know, just from the area that I, where I'm located, with the crosswalk that was redone across Lake Drive, that formerly was going in, in and out of someone's driveway, that has made a world of difference. I mean, and that's where, where we now have our, our signal and our flashing beacon and things like that, it's just, it's a big improvement, so I know, at least to me, the flow and not having, potentially having such a huge awkward intersection, where it's just like spanning so.
So wide.
And like we said, isn't.
And I, I mean pedestrians really, with the new crosswalk, then they won't be, they're not supposed to cross there.
You cross, you can cross where the crosswalks are, when it's safe to do so.
Cross where the crosswalks are, yeah.
Yep.
I have a quick question, just about, so as you're going east on Gorham and you come up to the island, why is it two-way there instead of just one-way going east? Like, yes.
Because you're gonna have people coming up of Inglewood, and if you wanna go to Gorham, you wanna provide that left jam.
Okay, that was an obvious, thank you, I didn't think about that, thanks.
So I went through this intersection today to try to figure it out, and to try to place some of the comments we got from citizens on the pilot project, and I didn't think it was all that confusing, but I think the revisions that you've described improve it significantly. I think, I, one of my initial thoughts was, why, why don't, why don't we connect the island to the north side of the street and just have everybody coming down Gorham, turn a right angle, right or left? But I think, you know, having that one lane for people heading west into Inglewood to just peel onto Gorham is, is also useful, so I think this updated plan addresses a lot of the concerns.
And one of the themes that we had, too, with, with this one and with the other two, we go through those, too, is concern from residents both on Martin Luther King Junior Street, as well as Inglewood for related traffic calming. And so what we tried to communicate in our communications, also with the materials for this evening, is we're really looking at, these are really two separate issues, so what we're really looking at here is really geometries, what we're really trying to address. Now, in terms of traffic calming, we do have a process in place where we can, we can make modifications post-construction. If Inglewood meets, meets the warrants for, for traffic calming, as in order to the memo, we'd be looking at probably speed cushions in that particular area. For, for Martin Luther King Junior, probably radar speed feedback signs, we've had some success with those, but again, we've got those policies in place, so that's something that we, you obviously saw, too, in the feedback from residents, but I think, I think some took that, took these demonstration pilots as that was traffic calming, when really it wasn't. It's really, it's really geometries what we're trying to address with this, in that we do have those policies in place, and we're happy to work with any of those residents to go through that process.
Well, and it's good to get that clarity, that these are two very separate issues we're addressing.
Correct.
One, one would be going through calming down the speeds, and the other one is dealing with the geometry, so I think making that distinction's important.
Definitely.
Okay, then I'll walk through if it's okay, I'll walk through the other two, which are very similar in nature, and then we'll have the consultants answer additional questions you all may have, too. So we'll move over to, look at Gladstone, here. So again, this, this particular area, again, we looked at an island, somewhat similar to what we have at Lake Drive in Conlon, that if you looked at the memorandum that was prepared, allowed for two-way traffic, pretty universally for both of those, there's, there's concerns from, from residents around both of those legs having two legs. So what we did is work with our civil and traffic engineering team, reviewing those comments from the public, and basically, instead of having an island in the middle here, basically, if you were to go out there today, you'll see some pink paint on the street, basically, kind of shift over, taper over, narrow this, this intersection down to reduce that crossing, and to maintain just fewer traffic here. I did make contact in all three locations with directly adjacent neighbors, residents, so in this particular case, for this location here in Gladstone, as well as Rosewood, those adjacent residents here would be getting additional right-of-way here to maintain, and they both were very positive about the proposed changes based off of the pilot, they also were thrilled about gaining additional green space.
Sure.
Essentially as part of their yard. It's still maintained a city right-of-way, so both of those adjacent residents I personally spoke to, and they were very pleased with the outcome there, so. Kind of a similar story, and then we can take some questions for, for Rosewood.
For Gladstone, before we switch away from that, would the sidewalk also shift to be along the side of the redirected street, or would it stay where it is now, sort of into that person's yard?
It's gonna follow through right here, it's just gonna have a shorter crossing, right now it has like an island, is that what you're talking about?
Sorry, I mean the sidewalk heading north and south along Gladstone.
Yeah, yeah, yep, yep, it's gonna be, it's gonna just be extended up into that space there.
Okay, so it's, so it wouldn't sort of curve to the left there and follow the street?
You can see the existing curb line, like, right here, that shows where it is, so.
Because I guess the reason I'm thinking about that is, north of MLK, you know, there's the sidewalk coming out on Gladstone, I'm wondering if it would provide a more natural crossing to have the sidewalk be redirected to follow the street, for pedestrians.
Oh, I see.
Like, if pedestrians walking south and north on Gladstone.
So Commissioner, you're talking here.
Yeah.
It's similar, they're eliminating multiple crossings on the westbound side.
Right, okay. I'm sorry. Yeah, maybe, maybe come up and answer.
Sorry, didn't mean to sidetrack us.
No, that's right.
Jared Halverson, good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners, I'm a civil engineering consultant that has put together the plan sheets for these designs in consultation with Progressive AE, our, our traffic consultant. On MLK, the intent is to try to reduce multiple crossings on those larger streets that we have within town, so you will notice that there, the ramp on the east side of Gladstone that used to cross to the north has been eliminated. There's only one crossing point now on the west side of MLK and Gladstone, which lines up with the northbound sidewalk on the west side across the street.
What is the reason to, for eliminating those double crossings?
Typically, I can allow Chris to speak to it, but it's to reduce conflict points within the intersections. The city has generally tried to do that where available, and that is similar on Inglewood and Gorham as well.
I guess, I mean, I'm certainly not a traffic engineer, but my feeling is a little bit mixed on that, because if somebody is walking along Gladstone, either north to south or south to north, and they're on the east side of the street, you're basically saying they should cross Gladstone, then cross MLK, then cross Gladstone again to get back to where they were, which, just with human nature, seems a little unrealistic and seems like it'd promote jaywalking.
If you were headed eastbound on MLK on the north side, you would progress to the next intersection.
I'm, I'm just talking about somebody who's walking along Gladstone, like, if somebody's walking, let's say, southbound on Gladstone, they're on the right, on the sidewalk on the right side of the street, and they wanna cross MLK and continue on Gladstone, they don't have a crosswalk right now, so you're basically asking them to cross Gladstone twice if they wanna use the crosswalk.
So you're requesting or questioning where the blue dot is of, is that where you're saying?
Yeah, or here, I, I'll take the mouse here, I, I think it would make sense to have the sidewalk track along the side of the street here, and then put in a crosswalk right here, so that would connect naturally from the side of Gladstone here to the side of Gladstone up here. Even though that, I know there's a crosswalk right here, I just, I just looked up the aerial photo on Google Maps, and there's a crosswalk right here right now. I understand what you're saying, Mr. Zoll, about conflict points, but I think if we wanna promote safe walking, it would make more sense to put in a sidewalk here as well. I guess I, again, I'm not a traffic engineer, so I don't really know what I'm talking about, but it, it seems like that's, you know, if I was driving along MLK, I come up to an intersection, I'm gonna look at both those crosswalks almost as one conflict point, and so I, I think it's better for pedestrians and no worse for drivers, I guess is my thought.
A crosswalk does not exist there currently.
There is no crosswalk there currently, right now, the only crosswalk across MLK is right here.
Yeah, good evening, Chris Zoll, Progressive AE. Commissioner, your, your line of thinking is very appropriate for the residential context. We have been looking at major streets to reduce conflict points and promote safety in general. You'll obviously see that with larger order roads, county facilities, state facilities in particular. Encouraging additional crossings and more pedestrian activity by providing intuitive and aligned opportunities where they are practical and feasible, and Jared shared with me that indeed, that opportunity does exist here. It is a preference that is reasonable, and absolutely could be considered if you wanted to have a crossing on both sides. But again, the industry has been looking at non-motorized crashes in particular, and looking to reduce conflict points, but I think your, your point about the continuation, the natural path versus having to go out of your way to continue, we could potentially end up with a gult path and/or a jaywalking pattern.
Okay, thanks.
This will be very similar on the other intersection as well, so depending on which way the input is.
Yeah, I, I think this is a good place to start, because I think this design is more simple, because we don't have an island here.
Yep.
What, what does that, if we were to move the sidewalk, what does that mean for the city right-of-way and private property? Because usually, people look at the sidewalk as being.
The line.
The line.
Yep, I was thinking that, too.
So you're saying, you're saying you would like the sidewalk to go like along here?
Yep, and then have a crosswalk go, go straight up to connect to the sidewalk on the other side of MLK.
Commissioner, I could, for cost-effective reasons, it's, it's all up to your, your preference. Right now, there's an existing sidewalk that runs directly due north.
Right.
And I'm only replacing a small amount to reconfigure the ramp through that island. We could continue to allow that northbound pedestrian access on the east side of Gladstone to come up to the T, you could take a small jog to the left on the alignment, and just put a ramp right across.
That might be a good solution.
That makes more sense.
Rather than building a new sidewalk, you're saying.
And we keep our delineation, I would prefer that in another manner, too, because I will be bringing some stormwater, there's always other considerations as well. The street always runs towards the curb, so it's running eastbound. If I keep that curb and gutter there, it's kind of a nice delineation, or, excuse me, the sidewalk between the property owner and the city, and I can try to move stormwater through our right-of-way without it entering possibly onto private property, or having unintended consequence that we, we aren't interested in.
I like that, then, yeah, I, I think it does make sense to, to put a ramp down and a second crossing across MLK, just, again, my, my personal perspective, but I, you know, I defer to whatever makes the most sense there.
That can be obtained.
So just humor me a minute, if you would, and would you show me what you're talking about with the mouse, so I can see exactly what.
Just extend a ramp.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so, can I, I'm not good with.
Oh, because the sidewalk that's.
So, so right now, the sidewalk goes right here, so I think what Mr. Halverson is talking about is then putting a crossing across here to go north to Gladstone. I, I was originally talking about putting the sidewalk diagonal here, but I don't, I don't know if that's important, but my point is, I don't think it's realistic for pedestrians to cross here, then cross here, then cross here, if they wanna continue on Gladstone.
I, I like the, what you just proposed, what we just drew there, I think that makes really good sense.
Yeah, now that the, you know, Gladstone would be lined up with Gladstone here, I think it adds to that, that utility.
Okay, but overall, regardless of this, you like this better than what's currently there, or?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Next one, which is surprisingly similar, just because of the layout.
Right.
A little bit different.
You gotta line up the sidewalk.
Kind of the, kind of the same story here, and again, if we're looking to, to align a crosswalk, it'd be a little bit more challenging here, perhaps.
I think I can do it to the east, to the existing tree on the north.
So we could do something similar, if you guys, if that's the, what the city commission would like to do, we can achieve something similar here in Rosewood, too, but kind of again, the same feedback was with, with, with the two legs on either side of the island, preference from residents, from their experience, was to really just have, just, just one realignment of the two-way traffic, which is what the design achieves. Again, I spoke to this adjacent homeowner as well, also was like the, like the redesign. Again, I spoke to this adjacent homeowner as well, also was like the, like the redesign, like, like both options, like this redesign and was also excited about having some additional central yard space.
Right.
Mr. Lefebvre, could either you or any three of you maybe address possibly what the original design thought process was for these two or even Gorham? Why we originally made these super wide intersections? Or was it just lack of planning?
No, so initially in, in the process, we looked at Lake Drive and.
Are you talking about historical?
Historical, historical, yeah. Not your lack of planning, I'm thinking historical, I'm so sorry. Yeah, that's something I got.
They were planted, planted at different times.
And tell us which retired city official is playing.
Separate, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so our, our cities in the, in the area that haven't been laid out, they're offset anywhere between 20 and 60 feet all over kind of, kind of the region here.
Okay.
With that, simple was usually the order of the day. And that was primarily driven by maintenance and operations considerations. So wider, straight, easier to maintain is how we ended up with seas of asphalt at offset intersections. I mean, originally, they were likely just straight up offset. And then through time, we've recognized that headed up is much safer because we didn't have interlocking turns. And then the way that we got there was by paving more. And now we're getting better at paving just what we need.
Thank you.
I think, reaction to this Rosewood one, I, I think this, this revised design that's up here right now is a good one. I think it would also work, this is another intersection that I visited and drove through. I think having the island with two-way traffic on both sides to me didn't make any sense whatsoever, especially since Rosewood is one-way heading south when you get across MLK there. So I, I think either an island with one-way traffic on either side or this design, either one of those work really well. And I think it achieves that concept of paving less and slowing traffic and all that.
Yeah, I agree. I think those are all good points. Were there any other questions or thoughts on any of the designs for engineers?
Well, since no one spoke, I was just, I'll maybe say something too. Just, I do agree with John. I think it's a good, a good catch there. As long as it doesn't really impede on anything else that's like underground or, I like the idea there. And I know that there's a lot of components that go into the planning of this stormwater runoff and all this, so. But I think that was a great catch, John, and yeah, it looks good to me.
And as an added bonus, we get more green space.
Which we do have an initiative, yes, for less carbon and all that, so it's, it's nice, yeah.
Yeah, and in terms of the crosswalks, I mean, I, I think you bring up a good point about, and I think, Mr. Zoll, did you use goat path? Is that what you said? And is that just where people just create a path because they feel that it's more natural?
If you go to any college campus, you see where the engineers put the sidewalk and where the students go.
Yup, okay.
I've used that goat path.
And that's what you're thinking that might, that's why you're advocating for maybe two crosswalks?
Yeah, I, I just, I think the percentage of pedestrians who would make three crossings to use crosswalks versus make one crossing without a crosswalk is, there's gonna be a split there.
And what are your thoughts on, on that? Because I know you said as a community, are other communities trying to just do the one crosswalk to lessen the point of conflict? Do you think that having two crosswalks would be a safety risk?
It can be.
Okay.
And there are certain roads where it is more dangerous, having more exposure. We're promoting a very walkable, slower-moving, intentional design with our neighborhood. And I feel that it's very appropriate to provide the right amount of pedestrian and non-motorized access throughout our rights-of-way. Where it becomes, if we end up with a crash pattern as a result, then we're going to want to revisit that. And, and why are those things happening? Is it a slight distance issue? It could be a plethora. And we may end up recommending one side or the other due to whatever the context is to help channelize and improve safety. Without an established crash pattern or existing safety concerns, utilizing a crossing on both sides, promoting more walkability in the neighborhood is, is very appropriate. You'll see more one-side intersections with state roads in particular and then county roads, but much less on the local road systems.
I have a subjective question. I know one of the things that we've constantly been working on with the streets is to, from a driver's perception, make them appear narrower and smaller as part of the effort to control speeds just from a psychological point of view. Does adding more crosswalks do the same thing? Like if I'm, if I'm driving down a street with a lot of crosswalks, because this stretch of MLK, just as a preface, it's, it's big, it's wide, it's got a low speed limit, but a lot of residents have observed there's a lot of speeding and I've observed that too when I go down it. I mean, you can see a long ways, there are very few obstructions. But I'm wondering if, if, you know, adding more crosswalks can help to break that up and serve some of the same purposes as, as narrowing a street or putting in bike lanes, things like that to, to make it appear slower or if that's not one of the things that does that.
I have not seen a study that has been able to demonstrate or measure the effectiveness of more crossings as it relates to vehicle speed. What would help slow traffic down would be adding more people, maybe not more crossings. So the more active an area is.
Right.
The generally better traffic behaves or is looking for than expecting pedestrians. So I don't think it's necessarily the facility, but making it a walkable place that encourages more walking does have a bigger impact on vehicle speeds.
One of the things for this particular stretch, Commissioner will recall that we, as part of the Bike Mobility Action Plan, this does have dedicated parking lanes as well as the shared bike lanes. So we are getting that natural calming effect. If you observe traffic on San Luire headed at MLK, you'll see. I've observed personally.
Because of the painted lines on it?
Yup.
Is this stretch of MLK wide enough to put in actual bike lanes? Because I, this stretch feels wider than San Luire, but I'm not sure.
It's marginally close. It's within a foot of having the cross-section. We'd have to move the curb lines on one side or the other to get dedicated lanes. And that's why we went with the advisory bike lanes. Because we were so close, we were trying to encourage that to be a friendly corridor for bicycles and come up with a good compromise. But we don't technically meet the geometry to have a dedicated lane.
Have we considered eliminating parking on one side?
Those are options, yes.
That's something I'd like to consider as the city commission because there's not a lot of parking utilization there.
Right, I agree.
One comment I want to make about the, I suppose, is it okay to go back to the Gorham?
Sure, we're all here, so.
Okay, so I don't live over there, but you know, I, obviously I drive over there occasionally. And without having some sort of, this is crazy, I know, but without having some sort of island there that kind of delineates those streets for me, I've actually thought that I was on Inglewood, but then I was actually on Tenway because it's, it's so very confusing the way that those, because it's, there's no delineation in that, in those areas. So for me, coming through that neighborhood with having some, having an island and having the, you know, having that delineation and having the flow of vehicles sort of naturally direct me to the street that I'm intending to be on. I know that sounds like an obvious thing, but I, I find that to be helpful. And then second to that, I especially like that people will understand that that is not supposed to be where they should cross. And perhaps they're doing that now and it's so wide and open.
It's so wide, right.
It's such a big expanse. So having that, having that crosswalk where it should be with the ramps and it's, it's away from that, that zone feels safer to me. And obviously, it's the, it's the, it's the uniform way, best practice to, to accommodate a crosswalk. So just those two things for me are, you know, I mean, it sounds silly to say, yeah, I don't know what street I'm on. But it's happened to me multiple times where I'm driving through there and I think I'm going down Inglewood, but I'm actually not, so. I feel like having that island and having that directive that it would help me navigate that better. And sort of, and the green space. Having some, having some stormwater, some, you know, some green space to help with the, with the drainage. And I just feel like it's a smart thing to do and would help with the flow. And maybe not, and right now, the way it is to me is confusing without having that island. And this might take some of that confusion out of that intersection.
It's like a visual delineation like this, right, something you can, you can see.
Right. So I just wanted to make that comment.
So I'd like to add to that just a little bit. You're spot-on. These revised geometries that we've presented tonight are more intuitive. They create more predictable behavior and it's also encouraging slower traffic. All very, all, you know, three important things that promote safety.
Thank you. Do you have something to add, Commissioner Wesley?
I was just talking, I was just going back to the, the financials of it. So if I'm reading this right, because I'm trying to understand, like, we are gonna be there doing some surface, like, roadwork anyway. And knowing that if we don't, this is our opportunity because we're not gonna come back to the area in about 15 years again, right? We won't touch that area, so.
Anywhere between that and 15.
10, 15. So the, the added cost though, just to do these things, I guess, is, is the delta, that delta, is that the 140,000 I'm looking at?
That's the, that's the revised estimate for the redesign for, for all three locations combined as our alternate one.
Okay.
Our contingency off of the already approved contract was about, at 10%, was about 138,000. So that just gives you some idea of what this, this alternate cost compared to just our contingency. This is not, if you were to come in here and mobilize, to do something like this totally separate, way different story. Your costs are gonna be much, much higher. That's why generally when we're planning on doing a project in an area, you know, we look at other things like utilities. We're moving lead service lines on Inglewood right now too. We're trying to, you know, get everything together. And if we have a situation that we've heard from the public on or we've identified with our team, we want to at least provide options for consideration.
I have a quick question, and so as reading through resident emails and responses, you know, up to today's meeting and even, and even today, some of the residents mentioned, why not a traffic circle? So why not a traffic circle? Because I know that, you know, sometimes it looks like it could fit there, so why not?
Let me grab you a couple of conceptuals of the actual way for the traffic circles.
Okay.
To show you what the layouts look like. They were considered and discussed.
So that's a great question. And it, and it was considered.
Okay.
And it was discussed.
Turn it around, so I know.
For me, that works.
With the theme there for the others.
Perfect.
There we go.
This was a configuration that we laid in trying to utilize the existing right-of-way that we have and stay within generally the margins of the existing curb line. So you will notice that we brought the three legs together and added a small island, very similar to the traffic islands that you would find on Argentina.
Sure.
To try to choke those flows down and make things more predictable. You'll notice the biggest considerations are when you start putting the roundabout in, you create these traffic maneuvers with new curb lines. They're almost like bump outs essentially. We have multiple driveways that are within the radiuses of the actual traffic circle. So not only are you navigating a traffic circle that has an unusual geometry that is non-typical, you also have conflict points of backing up cars. You have the potential of delivery trucks trying to come in and deliver and try to back out and not being able to do it within those small margins.
Right.
Where we've been successful with our traffic circles have been in those intersections that generally come together and those driveways are on 100-foot distances from generally the intersection. It gives us enough time where it creates predictability as you're driving. You can see the intersections, you can see the traffic movement. You can navigate the circle safely. And then there isn't a movement until you're well outside of it.
Right.
So that is kind of one of the factors. The second factor is you can also see the footprint enlarges. And I'm not trying to tell us where that cost boundary is. But this is on the order of magnitude of three to four times as expensive as the traffic island. So generally, as we try to bring these options to you for these millon fill projects, the intent of the bond has always been expressed to me to resurface as many of our roads, improve infrastructure where appropriate.
Right.
But to be mindful of those dollars. And that's the balance we're always walking is, are these rehabilitations or are we reconstructing? Those reconstruct costs start to go up significantly and then we start pulling away from the monies available for other.
And I'm sorry, you said this was how many more times expensive?
I would, I have not done a complete cost estimate because as we looked at the driveways.
Right.
That was kind of the, the first thing that came up and the red flag went up. We went, uh, this doesn't look as appropriate. I would estimate three to four times. So this Inglewood is about a $30,000 traffic circle of that $140,000.
Right.
I would estimate this to cost 90 to 120,000.
Right.
As a comparison, the Alexander Street roundabout that we put in four years ago. That was about $110,000. And that was four years ago without hyperinflation on all our building costs.
On everything, right.
So I may even be on the conservative side of what this could cost.
So potentially a much more expensive project with even more conflict points, given the driveways. And I didn't even think about delivery trucks because right here, it says this is only 16 feet.
Correct.
And people coming in and out of driveways and whatnot and a delivery truck dance.
And this doesn't even articulate all the other reconstruct, like the driveways would all end up having to be rebuilt. There's, there's other costs.
Oh, sure, yeah, okay.
As you have to tie all this together.
Yup.
As we conceptually laid it out, we got to a point where we went, this doesn't seem like the best approach. And at that point, we shifted.
Yup.
Our resources to other options.
Yeah, no, thank you and I'm, thank you for showing this because as I read through, and I will comment, they say, even though we don't like them, however, how about a traffic circle? So I'm, I'm, thank you, I'm, for showing this and I'm glad that, you know, you, you thought of this version as well because some of the residents had. So this is very informative, thank you. Any other thoughts or questions?
Not with respect to these intersect, these streets, but just kind of a random thing for you, Mr. Lefebvre. One of the emails from a resident talked about Breton Road and bump outs that were added that were when that road was reconstructed or repaved and everything. And it mentioned something about a left-hand turn lane at Inglewood. Did we have that?
So the most recent resurfacing project we did there, a federal project, was 2018. We did not make any changes at that time to anything in the layout on Breton Road. So what was taken out was put back in. When it was reconstructed was in the early 2000s. That's when the bump outs went and, went into place for traffic calming, et cetera. I'm unaware if, if, you know, if at that time there had previously been a turn lane and it was eliminated. I know from some subsequent studies based off of some, some concerns expressed to us, we had Progressive AE take a look at it several years ago. Pete Lamori, one of the traffic engineers, looked at it. Based off of the, the delays were more of the concern. And when we look at the actual time someone's delayed, when you look at the bigger picture of things, delay for a matter of, you know, five minutes at peak times when otherwise, you know, other times, it's, it's minimal. It doesn't really meet a threshold for, while maybe, while maybe aggravating to somebody, it doesn't meet the warrants for a redesign or addition. Chris could probably make to, more to that.
Yeah, so delay is one of the factors, but volume weighs in as well.
Sure.
So I don't have the data in front of me to, to know that left-turning volume to see that it would warrant the installation. But without it being there in the operation of the road, it sounds like it's kind of a short-duration problem. That it's not likely needed most of the time.
It doesn't seem that it's wide enough.
I know, I didn't think so either.
Well, that's why I think if it did exist, it was probably from that early 2000s.
I see.
Project, not from this more recent one.
Okay.
So to make it work now, we would have to widen it.
Right, we'd have to widen it, okay.
Just to remind the commission, when we were debating the Eleanor Way development, there's a lot of conversation in regards to Breton, south of East Grand Rapids into Grand Rapids. As we informed the commission at that time, we are aware Grand Rapids is in the early phases of, that's going to be a project for them. And we know it's on their radar in regards to that. Choke point coming into East Grand Rapids and trying to find alternatives and solutions for that. So that's working out there. I cannot give you a timeframe of when it's going to happen, but that's part of that dynamic.
Okay. And they're looking at how it affects us in coming into.
They just, everybody recognizes the challenges with that.
Okay.
Whether they get to a solutions or not, we'll see, but we know what's, we know it's on their radar, so.
That's good to know, thank you. Are there any further comments, questions?
I'd say like it's super informative, I appreciate the time and.
Yes, thank you.
Looking at all, every part, every aspect and consideration. And it makes a lot of sense how we came to the, to the final alternative for us to decide today. And I guess my next question is, in consideration of John's suggestion of kind of moving that sidewalk, if we were, how does that work then if we come, what comes to?
Well, I think we agreed not to move the sidewalk.
Sorry about the crossing.
I'm talking about the crossing.
Oh, crosswalk, okay, okay.
I'm sorry.
Adding a crosswalk.
Staff will take that. If the commission would like to make that, as we consider the actual motions for approval of this. If you'd like to incorporate to say, and direct staff to ask, excuse me, to add crossings on the east side of both those intersections, then staff will.
One thing I want to point out, oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's all.
One, one thing I want to point out, too, I did notice on some of the more, the newer messages that were laid here before us on the, on our, at our desks. And then also, Mr. LaFave had mentioned, so some of the emails were, some of the comments that came from residents were made prior to the revised.
Right.
Islands and plans here. So many of those concerns have been addressed with the revisions.
Right.
And so I think it's important to sort of point that out. It didn't occur to me initially and then I realized, oh, you know, I can see that the date that some of these emails are previous to the revisions.
Previous to the revisions, right, so.
As I noted before, that's where we've seen these types of more tactile demonstration pilot projects have been more effective because instead of looking at a design, a plan sheet, we're allowing people to experience some things and then that, take that feedback and incorporate it to make that change where appropriate.
Yeah, I'd like to, I go Commissioner Wesley's thanks to staff and our engineers for proactively addressing some of these issues and making changes so that we, you know, we're not just going back and forth. We see, you know, that the design's being improved, so I think that's, that's a huge deal.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
I think it's hugely important, too, to have these pilots. I mean, it was very successful at Reed's Lake Boulevard and Lakeside and all.
Yeah, that was the first, the first actually tangible, we could get out and experience it and it was, it's super helpful, too.
Good idea.
Yeah, it's a great idea, so, thank you.
Final question.
Okay.
So if we do adopt per, you know, adding the, moving the crosswalk a bit, does that change the price tag?
It will, and so when we get to the point of making motions, we'll, the requests will be to approve the design changes and approve related costs to the improvements. We're talking nominal amounts, this is not.
So, yeah.
Yeah, actually, because we're going to vote on each one individually.
I see.
And the motion will be, you know, this plan and associated costs. Whoever makes the motion can add in and associated costs. And we're going to vote on each one individually. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you.
Just so I'm clear, too, if we're adding that, that crosswalk, so there would be two at that, that point, really, it's just putting the ADA ramps in and painting the lines on the street, right? I mean, that's all we're really talking about.
We're under $1,000 per improvement.
Okay.
Great.
Are we looking for a motion?
Not yet.
Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so before we go to a motion, I would like to open this up to public comment. Is there anyone joining us here this evening that would like to speak to this agenda item? Come on up. If you could please state your name and address, we'd appreciate that.
I'm the authority on everybody's side. I'm Ray Fisher at 2108 10-way Drive. And Doug, I appreciate, I should have reached out to you. I've got a lot of questions answered here tonight, but I'm going to still make some recommendations. So, and I also appreciate seeing that roundabout, even though I hate them. I think it would have been a perfect fit if the driveways didn't interfere. So I just want to get that clear. And we've been a resident for 30, over 31 years in East Grand Rapids. So instead of reading four pages of what I was prepared to do and debunk some of the thoughts, I understand and appreciate that. So I'm just going to make some recommendations, if you don't mind. One is, I call it north, but it is kind of like a northwest. When you come off Inglewood onto Gorham, that when we put a stop sign there, then on the backside, we put a do not enter, okay? Number two, I would love for these new posts to have reflectorized the, all the way down so it really draws attention at night. Number three, I don't know if you've been able to do so, but when this pilot went out, there was parking being done there and that won't be able to be done within 12 feet there with that going on Gorham. Because some of those residents were parking the cars there. And with 12 feet, you take a suburban, they're about seven feet wide with plus mirrors. A passenger car is about five, six feet wide plus mirrors with the snow and whatnot. There's not enough room for two vehicles, so I'd make sure that's clarified. And then fourth, I should have called, but I think what would be nice on a project like this would also be to provide FAQs back to the residents so that it would kind of eliminate some of this. Because I know on the Facebook page for the Inglewood, Gorham area, there's been a lot of redundancy of what I brought up earlier. But here tonight, they got answered. So I think that would be helpful for both, just to take some of the blood pressure and bring it down a little bit. But I really appreciate everybody's efforts, Lori and everybody, for putting it all together, looking at things and taking into account what the residents were saying. And it was great, so those are my comments.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the suggestions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else joining us tonight? Hearing none, I will close public comment and I will bring, so we will do these one at a time.
Commission, if the commission would like to do all three.
Or we can do, do we want to discuss these individually?
Well, I, I did want to make a point about Mr. Fisher's comments that his suggestions for implementing, you know, implementing certain signage and things like that.
Yeah, the do not enter signs are actually included in the plan. You can't see, they'll be mounted on the backside of the stop signs. So we do have those as part of the plan, the reflectors. We install those based off of resident concern throughout the community, so that's not an issue. And we'll look into the parking piece of it, too.
Perfect.
We got a plan for that. So I don't think we need to do anything different than that, but I think we can accommodate those requests.
So I have a quick question. Will we, since it's a new installation, I believe, and a new sign, new signage, are we going to put the, the flags up, too, so that people are aware?
Correct.
Okay. And how long do those stay up?
Typically, three to six months is what we've done. But we, we have some advanced warning signs, too, and then you have the, the cross flags as well.
So it's really letting people know, hey, there's something new here?
Yes.
Okay, okay, perfect.
So did any of those suggestions need to be built into the motion or any of the conditions or anything like that?
Walk out, walk out.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so let's just do these, we'll go one at a time and do these very, do these quickly. Could I please have for the first item, the revised traffic island plan for Inglewood and Gorham, may I please have a motion and a second for that first item?
Motion to approve the revised traffic island plan for Inglewood at Gorham.
And associated costs.
And associated costs, thank you.
Second man.
Wonderful. Is there any further discussion on this, this part of the project, Commissioner? Okay. I just want to comment and again say, you know, thankful for Mr. Fisher's thoughtfulness and your input and thanks for coming tonight. And also thanks to everyone here for getting that feedback and making these revisions. So thank you to everyone. And if there's no further discussion, we can go to a vote? Okay, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, that project carries. Next is the plan for Martin Luther King Junior Street and Rosewood Avenue. May I please have a motion and a second for that plan?
I'll move to approve the revised realignment plan for MLK and Rosewood with the addition of a sidewalk along the east side of Rosewood and associated costs.
A crosswalk?
A crosswalk, I'm sorry, yes, and associated costs.
Perfect.
I'll say.
Okay. Commissioners, do we have any further discussion on this one?
I just echo Anna Mayor, like, Mr. Fisher had some really good, good ideas there. And I think also, I just wanted to mention about the FAQs. We're always trying to find ways that we can communicate best with, with our residents and, you know, so, you know, we're trying really hard, you know, to, to do that. But, but I appreciate that you, your time coming in here today as well, just, and then to see the process, I think, especially me and a new commissioner, it is pretty, really fascinating for me to find and understand the process. And, and we do have some really solid staff here that do really take strong consideration, looking at every aspect. So they consistently blow me away. So I appreciate everybody, so thank you.
Okay.
That's it, yep.
Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And next, we have the revised realignment for Martin Luther King Junior Street and Gladstone Avenue. Could I please have a motion and a second on that piece?
Sure, I'll, I'll do that one as well. I move to approve the revised realignment plan for MLK and Gladstone with the addition of a crosswalk along the east side of Gladstone and associated costs.
Any further discussion there? Oh, you seconded, perfect, okay. Any further discussion? Okay, no, again, I just want to thank everyone for their time and for the consideration and real deep dive on all these projects, it's really appreciated, so thank you. Okay, we can all go to a vote, so all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, thank you, everyone. So moving on to the next agenda item, consider authorizing professional traffic engineering services for associated traffic signal replacement for the Breton Road and Boston Street traffic signal at $27,380 plus a 10% contingency and associated schedule of rates for as needed traffic engineering services needs through fiscal year 2324. And again, introduction by Deputy City Manager, Mr. LaFave.
Okay. Including in this memorandum, I tried to include some history that's related to the streets and sidewalks millage that was approved in 2015 around other traffic signal improvements that we've made to date and that we're looking forward with. So I kind of noted the improvements for all our signals for lead pedestrian interval. And if you're not familiar with what that is, when you're at an intersection for the, all of the pedestrian crossings now have that countdown. And it also gives you that lead time, so there's that delay between when the signal changes for automobile traffic to allow pedestrians to get out into that crosswalk. So we've completed all of our traffic signals within the city or joint jurisdictions since the millage was approved. We did do a complete overhaul of the Breton Lake Lakeside traffic signal in 2016. Part of that was funded with some federal funds that we were able to secure. We've also made some other mid-block, mid-block warning flasher improvements as well as several other capital improvements, including the Lakeside Robinson Signal Replacement that was completed in 2018. That was kind of some in-kind work that was done with the road commission in the city of Grand Rapids as well as some cost share to fully upgrade that intersection as well. And then, as I noted in the memo, the city of Grand Rapids, their traffic signals division, the mobility department, we have a contract with them to maintain all of our traffic signals and we rely upon their evaluation for, for their requests for, to the city for, for improvements. And so our next two that will be out there will both be on Breton. This one at Breton and Boston is kind of that first piece, and then their next one would be Breton and Hall. So that will be out a little bit, a couple of years. But in order for us to move forward, we have some preliminary traffic engineering services that need to be completed as we look forward to, to making these improvements. And so we'd like to get going on those. It does take a lot of time and we also are up against supply chain issues for these upgrades. So we can complete this and if it doesn't, the project isn't included in the budget, that ultimately gets approved, we at least have all that engineering done so that when we're ready to go, we have that information done. If it's approved, we would probably be looking at a 2024 spring cycle for, for construction.
Okay.
I've also included, just to give some background, kind of that, kind of the design change from what's grandfathered and existing to what the current standard of design is. So I included, the, the second page of the memorandum, kind of the traditional signal design, that sort of diagonal design across the streets. The modern traffic engineering design is for four-box spans. Those are achieved either with mast arms or with, with, with wire. So just wanted to point that out and what those differences are so that you understand why we're doing it. So happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, your memo was really informative and I didn't know the difference between the traditional design and the box span design. And I, I understand why the box span design is preferable. I guess my, my main question is whether it's preferable enough to justify somewhere in the nature of $250,000 by the time we're all done replacing it. You know, one of the things in your memo said, in the course of projects that require upgrading an intersection under a signal, MDOT's going to be using these new box span designs. But I, I guess I'm wondering, is it, is it better enough to justify going in there and replacing something that seems to be already working as far as I can tell?
Well, that, that gets into the, the piece of the evaluation that Grand Rapids has completed. So just because something looks like it's operating wonderful today, there are, we've got the signal box that's off in the right-of-way that's typically gray or they get painted by artists, depending on the community, looking at some of those. And, and the actual, the signal heads themselves, while they may be functioning today, I can tell you based off of maintenance history, Grand Rapids team will be like, hey, we can't get parts for this anymore or we only think we can get parts for another few years, so we're going to have to start cobbling more things together. So perhaps I should maybe noted that a little bit more in there. But the, the concern is that, that intercept, that signal setup for what's existing today is going to be more of a challenge to operate in the near, for, the near term. So it would be a, a good time for us to address not having those maintenance issues or concerns, to make sure that it's functional. If not all the time, most of the time. And then in doing so, make sure that we're modernizing it to current practices.
Is there an option for kind of an intermediate step that would replace, let's say, the, the signal heads or, or otherwise modernize it without, because it, I, I'm not sure exactly how the cost breaks down, but it seems like a significant part of the cost is sinking two new poles in and making sure they're, you know, engineered properly and all that. And if, you know, would there be a significant cost savings if we just kept the existing pole infrastructure, but modernized the hardware or something like that?
In the end of the day, we're going to be, we're heading in that direction. So, you know, if we did a, you know, let's call it a capital refurbishment where maybe it was maybe perhaps half the cost, it would still be down the line long-term, I would say probably in the next decade, would be looking at making those changes. You'll see that those changes are being made throughout the metropolitan area or other places in Michigan, too, that when you get into that kind of that, that piece where the existing signal and associated signal heads are no longer cost-effective to maintain, that they make that investment in those improvements. I will say that, you know, a four-box wire span improvement here compared to like the mast arms that you see out, out front here.
Right.
That today with inflation is probably something around 450, 450,000 for something like that. So this is still a cost-effective option, not something that we take lightly. I think as, as Mr. Helverson noted, that we, we look at various options and say, how do we get that improvement we need to make to make sure that we're, we're meeting the. do we get that improvement we need to make to make sure that we're, we're meeting the, the top of the line standards when we're making those changes, but, but try to do so in a meaningful way in terms of cost.
Good, I appreciate it, thanks.
Where would I go to see an example of this right now in Grand Rapids?
Well, the closest one you can see is right here in East Grand Rapids, a few of them. So right, right on Plymouth, right at Lake and at Wealthy, and then also on Lakeside at Robinson Road. Those are all four-box spans and it would be very similar to those locations that have already been upgraded.
Are there any other questions for Mr. LaFave?
You might, you might have answered, well, I've got a question just about how our relationship is with Progressive AE, because I noticed that they got the proposal here, usually I'll cease like multiple proposals and we decide, but are we in contract with them? Is that why, or?
We've, we've been utilizing in Progressive AE, we've utilized some different firms in the past, which has actually dwindled unfortunately. We've had a relationship with them, similar to some of our other consultants, and it's been as-needed services. So there's not like a guarantee, that's why we're bringing this project to you. But for, you know, as-needed stuff where we have a concern that's outside of the capacity of, of our staff, you know, we may reach out to them and it may just be a few hundred dollars for, for the services. In terms of, in terms of this particular project, you know, we feel it's prudent to, to work with them. They've worked with a lot of other improvements here and have a lot of that background knowledge and information from previous studies and that type of thing. So I guess I'd say that this is really a, the, the number you see here is actually, you know, a really good number in terms of what we're, we're trying to achieve here. And they have that, they have that expertise working with us and understanding our previous traffic signal upgrades as well as studies in, in neighboring areas.
Agreed. Yeah, thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. LaFave? Thank you. Okay, so could I please have a motion and a second for this agenda item?
Move the Commission consider authorizing professional traffic engineering services with Progressive AE for signal replacement at Breton Road in Boston in the amount of $27,380 with a 10% contingency.
Wonderful. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion, Commissioners? Okay, so we'll go to a vote. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Moving on to the next agenda item, to consider approval of the National Opioid Settlement Agreement with TIVA, Allergan, CVS, and Walmart and authorize the City Manager to execute any documents necessary on behalf of the city of East Grand Rapids. Introduction will be by City Manager, Mr. Charles.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the city of East Grand Rapids has actually entered into a previous agreement a few months ago on this. Several estates across the country sued on various opioid manufacturers, distributors, et cetera, and we've been seeing these settlement agreements come forward. So this is a second round of, of settlement agreements that were being asked to sign. If we do approve this, we waive our right to sue these companies. Mr. Hoff and I talked, he recommends we not sue them. So we are recommending approval. We will recognize a total of $13,424 over cumulatively a 13-year period, you see the payout period from the various many, various companies. So it's not a significant amount of money. Our previous settlement, I think, was about $27,000, again over a multi-year period, so these are not huge dollars for us. For some of the larger communities, it's very significant monies that go to them, but given the size of the settlement, the, the fact that we were, will probably not engage in litigation on this issue.
Right.
We are recommending approval. There are limitations on how the funds can be used that are articulated at the end of the memo for City Convention information. Attorney Hoff has taken the opportunity to read this in excruciating detail.
I did.
And we all recommend approval. I did include a presentation from the Michigan Municipal League from December of '21, just kind of describing how we got here, why we're doing this, things of this nature for that. Again, when all this gets settled out, not going to be huge, huge amounts of money, so we'll be looking how we're going to expend those funds in accordance with the agreements. But we're not talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, I think, you know, we're probably, I'm not even going to try to guess where we're going to end up, but it's not going to be a real significant amount, significant amount for us. Again, for other communities, larger communities, Grand Rapids, for example, this can be some pretty significant dollars to them. So with that, staff does recommend approval of it and providing authorization from myself to execute the documents.
Perfect, thank you. Also, thank you for including that presentation, that was helpful in kind of understanding where this all came from. So thank you for doing that. Do we have any questions for City Manager Charles?
The only downside to this would be that we give up our right to sue Walmart, right?
Correct.
The only downside.
For this, for this particular topic, hopefully.
Yeah, oh yeah, no, we, we'll keep all the rest from open.
Right, everything else is on the table. Is there any other questions or comments? Okay, and that would be sent. Could I please have a motion and a second for this agenda item?
I'll move to that the City Commission authorize participation in the National Opioid Settlement Agreement as presented and authorize the City Manager to execute any documents necessary on behalf of the city.
Second.
Wonderful. Any further discussion, Commissioners? Okay, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Moving on to consider approval of a one-year contract in the amount of $25,000 for the 2023 Fourth of July Firework Show, and this introduction is by Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Melville.
Yeah, good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. As outlined in my memo this evening, the Parks and Recreation Department has the pleasure of organizing the Fourth of July festivities for the community, and one of the components of that celebration is the fireworks show to end the evening. So each year we solicit pricing from firework display operators and, you know, try to select a, a quality of firework operation and from a company locally here to, to put on the show. So this year we did reach out to Great Lakes Fireworks LLC, who has been our firework display operator in the past. They've done the, the show for us for the past couple of years. And we also, for comparison's sake, received pricing from Pyrotechnico, which is also another firework display operator based here in the west Michigan area. So both of the companies submitted proposals and they were both relatively comparable in the, the number of minutes for the show and then also for the, the firework shells counts for the show. But also the Pyrotechnico, after they submitted, they did indicate that they were full for the season. So, but it was nice to have their proposal for comparison's sake to, to be able to compare against the Great Lakes Fireworks. So based on pricing from last year, costs have gone up for, for putting on shows. So last year our budget was for $25,000 as well, and a $25,000 show this year would be a slightly smaller, two to three minutes, depending on how they decide to stage the fireworks, but it still would be a, a really great firework display for the community. Also should add that in the past, for the, for the past three years, Spectrum Health or for now Corwell Health has been the sponsor for the firework show. We've been in communication with them for quite some time here to, to work out the sponsorship for the summer. They have not quite yet committed to that. So as outlined in my memo, we do have some alternate funding options if you do decide to move forward. We've been in contact with some potential other new sponsors. Then also, it could be a combination of sponsorship dollars and general fund dollars. But it would be important to make a decision on this soon so that Great Lakes Fireworks will continue to hold our spot for the firework show for, for this year. So with that, happy to answer any questions you might have.
So the, because I was going to say, my first question was, wow, you know, it's, it's been $25,000 for several years in a row, so really the only tick is just a few minutes, you said?
Yeah, it would be approximately two to three minutes shorter, which would mean they kind of scaled down the, the number of eight-inch shells and six-inch shells so it'd be just, you know, kind of a linear scale down of, of the show size.
What would we be committing to here? Like, let's say we approve this, but then we don't get a sponsor. Are we on the hook for paying the whole $25,000 or can we reevaluate with Great Lakes at that time?
At this point, we'd be, we'd be committed to the $25,000, so.
How long, how many years has Spectrum sponsored this?
So the, the files that I found is that we had a three-year agreement with them.
Three-year, that's right, okay, okay. And that expired last year.
Correct, last year, there was a one-year pause.
Extra year because of, yeah, because of COVID, I remember that.
It seemed longer than it actually was.
Right, that's right.
So just speaking to the question of the sponsorship, we do anticipate a meeting with Spectrum leadership on a number of issues. This will be a subject of conversation with them.
Okay, wonderful.
If not that, we are also working potential other outside funders. The Community Foundation has expressed an interest to support some of, they cannot support the full $25,000.
Sure.
But we are, if Spectrum is not unable to come through, then we will be identifying other potential donors in the area, and we've begun that process already.
Wonderful. But it is important for us to get this on the books now so that we can have?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Perfect.
I remember last year we had a discussion of environmental considerations with regard to the fireworks show, both focused on cleanup, focused on, you know, the, the impact on the Reed's Lake natural area. Obviously, we don't have the, the contract here, but I'd like to request that along with this, we, you know, I'll defer to city staff as the best way to incorporate this into the contract, but, but incorporate some of those, you know, best, environmental best practices and make sure that we are doing what we can because we're setting off a whole bunch of explosives right here, our, our most natural area here, and I think that demands some sensitivity.
Absolutely noted.
Perfect, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Okay, so could I please have a motion and a second for this agenda item?
I move to approve the one-year contract with Great Lakes Fireworks in the amount of $25,000 for the 2023 Fourth of July Firework Show.
Perfect, thank you. Have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we can, is there any further discussion?
I think the three of us all have like the same, it's, it's hard to second because while we know the community loves it and likes it, it's, from the environmental standpoint, it's, it's kind of heart-wrenching.
Yeah, I agree.
Got to be a better way to be able to do that celebration that we could look into down the road somehow.
I would be in favor of a laser light show.
Pink Floyd.
I think beyond that too, it's also, you know, you think about the dogs and you also think about people who are suffering from PTSD. It was also a consideration of mine too, but, but I also think just it's a, it's a tradition that's hard to fight at this point, and I think that people will want.
Well, I think it's important to get it on the books right now, and I hear what you're saying.
We don't have an alternative plan.
You'll find a laser light show that's, can do it by July 4th, they can revisit it. Obviously, we can be open to lots of other suggestions, but.
It was something that was mentioned in the past when, with Fred Byrne.
The Pink Floyd light show, or was it?
Blow up some compost.
Okay. I know there's a lot of, there's a lot of community members who are wanting to, you know, there's the, the dogs, veterans. You know, nationally, we've had a lot of trauma with guns and things like that, and then, and then there's also a lot of people that live around Manhattan Park that want to save eagles and not disturb things, so I think it would be worth considering.
I wouldn't, I would point out though, we have frozen our spending, which does cut down on the amount that we're, we're doing, which I think is a, a good thing. We've done that for two years in a row now.
Yep, that's a good point.
I think that if we were to consider some of these alternate options, perhaps next year we could bring this up earlier on the agenda because if we, if we do end up deciding that the fireworks show is still appropriate, you know, I, what Mr. Melville was saying, we, we do need to lock it in now or potentially even earlier than now.
Right, right.
But that doesn't give us time if we, if we start considering it now to consider alternatives, so maybe, maybe that's a good idea for next year.
Just start looking into different alternatives earlier.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Would that fall into the Parks and Rec, like, agendas to start talking about there? Or do you have like subcommittees that you work on just to start to explore, you know, environmentally safe or, or alternative fireworks celebration? But how's that work? I don't know.
Staff would start researching and start.
See what else is out there.
There are those drones worms with legs.
I actually think maybe we would even consider doing like a survey, a community survey around this.
Yeah.
Just to get, to get some feedback about it.
Sure.
I would agree. I think if we did that without feedback, you could get a lot of push, but I do think there are probably a number of people in the community that if they saw different options and say, hey, that's a neat idea. There's, the private fireworks are substantial around the lake as it is, on top of the fireworks we give, so.
Yep. Wonderful. Good discussion. Can we go to a vote on this? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Great, thank you, motion carries.
Now on the DTE gas lines.
But yes, but great discussion and.
It's been a thrilling evening.
If we don't improve those, we might not need fireworks.
That's infrastructure. I missed what you said.
I said if we don't improve the DTE gas lines, we might not.
Okay, okay, so that's a great introduction there. So next is the discussion of the DTE gas renewal program.
So we talked a little bit this during the strategic planning session. Mr. LaFave and I, as well as some other city staff, met two weeks, two weeks ago, yeah, last week?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Spent a couple of weeks around here. Anyway, as I alluded to during the strategic planning session, DTE has targeted our area for rehabilitation of the system within is the map, and I did include the presentation, updated presentation from DTE, a little bit bigger map. All the areas highlighted in yellow are areas that they would like to rehabilitate in the summer or during the season of 2024. They'd actually like to get going conceivably October, November of 2023 for that. The system that they're talking about replacing, a lot of the system is 100 years old, so we, we do not, or we want to rephrase that, we concur with DTE's desire to update the system. We have seen various leaks throughout and whatnot, and their modeling says we're next in line, so to speak. They have, with hesitancy, offered a multi-year option, I'll leave it at that, but they are, would really like to be able to get this done in one season. The upside of that is they're in, they're out, we're done with this in regards to the, the effort, DTE being in the community. If you go down Plymouth, Boston area right now, those neighborhoods, you'll see, kind of get a sense of what's going on. They are doing line replacement with transmission main on Sherman right now, which is why it kind of looks.
Right.
The way it does. And that is not going to be typical for the whole system. What we anticipate is more of a two-inch, four-inch replacement, spot repairs here and there, things of that nature, so they're not talking about the big, big lines to the best of our knowledge. We have requested design plans from them to say, okay, what are you thinking, things of that nature. We anticipate having that actually next week, actually this week they promised us, didn't they? In regards to that. So the upside is they're in, they're out, we're done. The downside is staff cannot handle doing this by ourselves. We understand the magnitude, the impact on the community, we just, with all the other projects we're going, there's a staff limitation on us being able to chase these projects all the way around our, as everybody can appreciate, our residents tend to be very highly engaged, and if something's not, not going right, we're the ones who get the first call. DTE has committed to have a senior project manager onsite every day, which is a good first step, but we still think there's going to be some additional resources needed. Mr. LaFave and I have talked in regards to seeking outside assistance, potentially from other firms that do construction management, things of that nature. So we're, we're, those conversations. Ideally, we would have DTE pay that cost. I don't know if we'll be able to get, get there. So we are looking at out-of-pocket expenses in the order of magnitude, conceivably as much as 100, 150,000, because we're having an engineer basically running around all year, bird-dogging this for us. It's, that's, I don't know what those numbers are, but I'm trying to set expectations for the City Commission. But if we do, bless us, and there's this kind of interesting dialogue going on right now, on the one hand they're saying we can do multi-year, but can we, you know, and whatnot. Commissioner asked during the planning session of, do we have any say in this? Not really, this is an MPSC. Commissioner asked during the planning session of, do we have any say in this? Not really. This is an MPSC mandated improvement. They've committed, as I noted, system-wide improvements of 3.5 billion. They have to be done by 2030 something, I think it was what they had shared with us. But again, we're dealing with a system that we know, just operationally, through the various leaks we see throughout the system, that yes, it needs to be updated. And we have, we don't dispute that at all with DT. The question is, how do we mobilize for it, things of that nature? The other advantage of going full year, this would represent, or doing one year, this would represent 50% of DT's work in this region. So as far as dedication or resources, that means we're going to see a lot more in this area versus if we break it up, you know, if we become, say, 20% of the workload, then, you know, they just don't have the resources dedicated to the community that they would with a higher level of project. With that, Mr. Lefave and I have talked, we are reluctantly, I guess, leaning towards the one-year option for city commission consideration in regards to that. Again, needed repairs, DT, I think they truly have, we have their attention in regards to some of the things that we're seeing going on as far as work done in Grand Rapids and lack of attention to detail is not acceptable in this community. That's why they have committed to that dedicated resource for our community. So we're making progress in regards to that. They have worked in other highly engaged communities on the east side of the state, so they have an appreciation for some of the dynamics with our community and respect that. So we probably, when we met with them, there's what, 10, 12 of their staff in the room with us, including a senior level VP who's in charge of the gas renewal program. And so we've, we've got, we've got those resources. So seeking feedback from commission this evening, DT has indicated they'd like to have indication from us as soon as possible in regards to that. Our recommendation is go with the one-year, understanding that we're looking potentially October, November for them to start mobilizing. Here, we'll start to see some preliminary work. They'll get through winter and then they'll come in and do everything. They do appreciate, they do have commitment on restoration, things of that nature. What's different about this program as compared to, we saw some replacement occur on Lake Street last, last summer, I think. It's a different, different part, silo of DT. This is all they do versus their operations crew that may come out and go, oh, I've got to replace this three-block stretch because of things of that nature. So different, different dynamic and things of that nature. They understand it's a, you know, they're not done until they're done. Other things that we are comforted by is we're dealing directly and our residents will be able to deal directly with DT staff. They're not going to have to go through the 800 number and play voicemail tree and things of that nature. The people in charge of this program, their cell phone numbers will be given to residents in regards to that. So we also have a commitment for them. There's a contractor in the area that we're not having great experience with in regards to communication and restoration. The work that they're doing on the gas pipe, we have no issue. But their interaction with the community and whatnot has not been real great. They are bringing in a different contractor that they feel will be, better meet the needs of our community as compared to who's operating in the city right now. So with that.
So I have a couple of questions just right out of the gate. So the, so the multi-year plan is really not even on the table, right?
I think we could push for it. I don't know how successful we'd be.
Would there be the need for additional engineers, contract engineers, if we went that route?
Depends on how, how many years. If they're doing just a, you know, if they're talking over multiple, multiple years, maybe not. If they're talking, oh, we're going to break this up over two years, then yes.
So then your recommendation is the one-year, kind of ripping the Band-Aid off, right? My question with hiring the engineer, because I completely understand staff's time and, and I appreciate the honesty of, look, we don't want anything to fall through the cracks. I really appreciate that. So a project of this magnitude, I think, yes, we, we need to make sure that it gets done and gets done well, along with all the other projects we have going on. My question about that is if we do hire outside engineers to come and assist, because DT committed to one, just one for, for the whole project. Okay. Would those engineers have a say necessarily over, like, how would that work?
So we, we would have a say on line look. There's this negotiation that'll go on in the field. And we deal with this on, when we replace water and sewer main. We have all these wonderful plans and whatnot, and we open up the hole and go, huh, look at that. Or, you know, there's a 200-year-old tree there, let's go that way. So they would help us with those kind of field decisions, relieving the pressure on staff, our, our team. And the reality is, our team is still going to be out there, you know, with this. But having them be called in only when necessary versus having this be onsite the whole time.
I see. Okay.
So there is going to be the, here's, here's the design, here's what we think is going to happen. And again, is, Mr. Lefave and I have both been part of major water main and sewer main replacements and the number, particularly with a community of this age, where we've opened up a hole and went, hmm, okay, that's, none of us expected that.
This person could advocate.
This person would advocate, right.
Also, a tree gets chopped down because it was easier for DT to go that way. He could say, no, 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 we're going to do this.
Right. So they would be the advocate onsite, they'd be working with DT, their contractors to go, go here, go there. We have a major push. One of the things we're very concerned about is given the, the level of investment we've made into our streets over the last eight years now. We don't like the idea of them coming in potholing streets and things of that nature. We are pushing on them to be in the sidewalk and the greenbelt as much as possible. Again, balancing impact on our trees, impact on everything else that goes on. But having that city director, city resource out there with marching orders, so to speak, of you, this, they'll do this, this, and this. Or as importantly, if they're out there looking at something and go, oh, this ain't right, then be on the phone to Mr. Lefave, his team, myself, whatever, you know, to come out and go, okay, we're going to tackle it this way. Again, I think once we have their plans in hand, we'll have a better sense of this. If we're looking at mostly two-inch replacement, we're not as concerned about that type of replacement versus you get into the four and the six inches. The larger the pipe, the more disruption you see. You'll see on Plymouth right now, they're doing a, was it a six-inch?
Correct, six-inch.
Six-inch on Plymouth and six-inch on Sherman.
Sherman is a 12-inch.
12-inch on Sherman. So as the pipe gets bigger, the more of the disruption above ground that you see. They have a desire by migrating to the high-density plastic that they're installing versus the metal pipe that's out there, or in some cases, wood pipe in some parts of the system, you'll know in the.
Wood?
Yeah, presentation. Yeah, no, this is, they've, they've opened up the hole and gone, hello. But they are, but by moving to modern materials, they're able to actually downsize the pipe and get better pressure and flow through. Again, no different than what we do with our water main rehabilitation replacement, same concepts there. So from their perspective, they want to also size the system to make sure that what they see, we have, some homes are much larger than others. We see have a lot of homes with generators, things of that nature. So our, some of our neighborhoods have different gas, gas demands that they may see in other parts of Kent County. So that's all part of their modeling that they're looking at. But once we have a sense of this is what they're putting in, then we'll have a, you know, kind of, we can either, at that point, we'll be able to scale the level of additional resources we will need in regards to that. We will push on DT for financial assistance for that, for that, because I don't think it's appropriate that they totally burden us with that. But we also recognize the entity we're dealing with, and we also have, they have the mandate from Michigan Public Service Commission to go, thou shall. So that's that, that balancing act that we're doing in there. Again, system, does the system need the update? Absolutely. And we support it completely. It's just how do we go at this and mitigate the impact to the communities to the best of our ability.
Honestly, I feel like ripping the Band-Aid off is probably better rather than having us go through a year-long cycle of, you know, start, stop for the winter, start again, and then do it somewhere else. I think that that's almost prolonging because, you know, it's going to be disruptive 100%. But is it necessary? Absolutely. So it's probably best to get it over with, I would think, you know, rather than belabor it.
I've heard from a number of residents that have seen what they've been doing in Grand Rapids and were not, not really happy about the prospect of being next on the list, but it sounds like we've really done our homework about that. I, I think, you know, it sounds like we've considered a number of things to mitigate that impact. So given this needs to be done, I think that's, that's good. That's the best we can do. And I'm glad it's, I'm glad we're aware of that type of reaction and that it's being addressed.
Yep.
Just, and to DT's credit, they're willing to work us, with us on communication, community forums, things of that nature. So they're, they have a whole communications team. They're willing to tailor their communication for, for our needs. They express a, almost a level of excitement, if you will, that we're so fully engaged. And we were able to share that we have full, our systems, water, water sewer, everything is fully mapped out. We're giving access to our GIS. They were almost giddy. They're operating in other parts of the state where they just have no idea where stuff is, not only their stuff, but other municipal utilities. So they're, they're kind of, you know, I don't want to say a happy place, but you could see the.
That's certainly going to make the process easier.
No, no, it's going to absolutely help us in regards to that. We are gearing up our own communication strategy in regards to how to do this. Ideally, we're able to push, I don't want to say push, but have our residents interact directly with DT. But we also understand our residents have, and rightfully so, when in doubt, they call us. So being able to manage all of that. Mr. Lefave, do you have anything to just?
No, I would just add that, I mean, obviously, this will be a big undertaking. But again, I think as has been noted, you know, it's going to be a challenge as it is, but to, to shrink the duration of time that we have that impact is going to be, you know, internal conversations with staff would rather go through, you know, a year-plus of what this will be instead of multiple years because we do have a very engaged community and they do come in to see us and they do call us. And despite even having those resources directly with, with DT, currently for the open projects they have, what we have done is add those to our construction page. And then we also have contact information there too. Again, we're using our own communication platforms to try to help communicate with residents. And the other piece to this too, as was noted by the city manager, with the investments we've made in our, our streets and sidewalks and network, there's going to be some conflicts, there's no doubt about it, where some things are going to happen that we wish would not happen, but they will. The other piece to this too is we have, we have in the past and continue to share with them what our projected plans are. So one of the things that we have done is kind of mapped out in their prescribed areas here where they'd like to work, streets that we can turn them loose on right away as soon as they have their design done to at least get their cross tie-ins to the street done, stub it up, as city manager noted, into the outlaw and that, you know, area between the sidewalk and the street. So that if it's a street, we're going to be repaving this spring and summer or next year, that we've already got those crosses in so they don't have to come in and pothole or cut into that new. So we're, we're trying to do those things. It won't be foolproof, I can assure you that. But we're making every effort we can to mitigate, minimize damage to our own infrastructure.
That's great.
And just to give you an example of that, you will see the intersection, our Plymouth at Hall Street, north and southbound, or north of, yeah, north of Hall, will be shut down over spring break for a major crossing that they're doing there. So we are coordinating with them. Hall Street is scheduled for rehabilitation 2025.
Plymouth, Hall Street is done.
I'm sorry, Plymouth, sorry.
Yep.
Plymouth Street, 2025?
Yes, 2025.
So we've kind of turned them loose and said, get in, get out, because we're coming to do new asphalt now. So we're not as anxious of, we know we're going to be rebuilding the streets. So we are working with them. And again, the feedback and reception we got during the DT meeting was a lot more, we walked out of it feeling a lot more comfortable than we did walking into the meeting.
Okay.
Things of that nature. And again, we know we have the full attention of their senior leadership. It's in regards to this project, so.
That's great. And so you said it would start probably November, October, Novemberish?
October, November-ish.
And then break probably January, March?
Yeah, it really depends on the weather. The neighborhood I'm in, just south of the city and Grand Rapids, they actually were working through most of winter, but that was because they had a mild winter. So that's, that's going to drive a lot of that.
Okay.
So as I articulated, the notion about cost impact to the city and level of effort for that, that's also going to depend on how long their season is going to be and things of that nature.
Perfect. Okay.
Okay. I'm sorry.
No, are there any other questions or comments, thoughts?
It's a necessary project.
Yes. But I agree that, like, just, just get it done. It's important that there are actually wooden pipes. That is.
Not necessarily in the east Grand Rapids, but in their system, they have found wooden pipes.
Okay, well, then if there's no further questions or comments, we can go to a motion in a second for this agenda item.
Motion, the commission agreed to the pending DTE gas renewal program to occur in 2024.
Second.
Second, okay. Any further comments or discussion, commissioners? I just want to again, thank you for your attention to detail and for thinking, look, we need help because I think that's really important. We have so many projects going on. I think it's very important to, you know, be able to manage everything as well and knowing our community is engaged. I feel like you've really covered all the points and asked all the right questions. So thank you for that, especially going into such a project that's going to have so much impact on our residents and on our community for a while, so.
And one of the things, and we strive to mitigate, we just, we know there's going to be, we're going to have a moment during this whole thing. So you will hear from residents, we apologize in advance. We're doing everything we can to mitigate, but it's.
But thank you for everything you've done so far. It's very, very much appreciated. So that being said, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. So next we have approval of tonight's consent agenda items. May I please have a motion and a second to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Wonderful. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. So now we will move to the work session. We have the goals and objectives for fiscal year 2023, '24, and introduction again by city manager, Mr. Charles.
Before we go there, can I, I need to excuse myself because I have to coach boys volleyball at 8 o'clock.
Volleyball, volleyball.
Volleyball.
Volleyball, okay. Wasn't sure.
Are we still good to proceed?
Yep, we'll still have a quorum. We'll, if, if commission's comfortable, we'll, just recognizing the amount of absences, we'll just provide kind of quick highlights this evening.
Okay.
And kind of make sure commission, those of you left, are comfortable with the direction staff is headed. Is there anything there? This is not intended to be the only time you get to see this. We'll incorporate this in the budget. So as we go through the budget process, if we get into that cycle and someone, we go, oh, crud, we forgot to add this, then we'll still have that opportunity to adjust accordingly.
I'm wondering whether.
I didn't say my apologies. We, we have an assistant too, but he can't be there tonight. And so we're, we've shifted everything late as it is, so.
Sure, Mark.
Sorry.
I'm wondering whether the work session is necessary for today, both given the time and given the fact that half the commission is now going to be absent, or whether we want to push it to the next meeting. I guess I'm not sure. Looking through here, I'm not sure whether there's anything that's urgent, but I'm, I'm not sure if I missed something.
Well, and.
He said he was just going to do the highlights, right, just a quick.
Well, and I guess, well, let me, let me, because we're now moving into budget preparation and development. So that's why we're, I'm asking for feedback. But if it's one that, if the commission is, if there's anything, two ways about this, staff can go through particular items that we'd like to highlight. We can, we'll do that again during the budget session. You know, presenting, you know, here's our focus and things of that nature. I'll give commission opportunities. But if, just given what we've developed, I'll start with, if you want to go department, department real quick, are any questions over the, any areas that we're missing?
That sounds good.
That'll always give, give staff, as we start pulling all this together.
We've essentially, I mean, this, this document here is covering everything that we'd already laid out on our, our sheets around the room and the notes that we took and just putting them in a nice, neat little.
And as I, as I noted when I joined the city, we're, we're not going to make it this year, unfortunately. But I'm hoping by the next budget cycle, you'll see that clearer, here's our priorities, here's our current things, here's, as you see, for our goals and objectives at a staff level, there is, there is clear links. Our goals and objectives also include. um, clear links. Our goals and objectives also include items that are priorities identified by city commission, but also staff initiatives, where we're seeing stuff, um, that, you know, um, whether it be in public works, parks and recreation, um, that we would like, um, we would like to, um, establish things, those type of goals, too. So it's that blending up. Commissioner, to your question, um, is, yes, we've incorporated, but we also have staff, some staff stuff in there that we wanna make sure commission's comfortable with, as we're running amok, so to speak.
Perfect.
Um, just with that, um, were there any questions on city manager clerk's office? Um, I would note, I was gonna, um, I realized reviewing today, I do wanna add, I will be adding a goal, um, for the climate action plan in that geography side.
Oh, sure, okay.
Realized, let's look at it today and went, eh, that was the one I forgot.
Okay, and that, that is appropriate here?
It'll, it'll be actually under the city manager section.
City manager, okay, all right.
I just wanna point out a couple of little typo-type things.
Sure.
Because I really don't know what, where this is going next, if this is actually going in the binder that we get, but, um, the, I don't know, page one, two, three, probably the fourth page under city operations, so it says priorities one, two, and then four.
Mm-hmm.
So you might probably make that priority three.
Okay.
And then, um, I wanted to ask under community development, on the bottom priority three, it says fiber internet slash SG internet. What's the SG?
I think that's a 5G.
Oh, oh, okay. That's a five.
Oh, I, that's supposed to be a five, okay, yeah.
It kinda threw me. Okay. And on the next page, under infrastructure, same thing, where we've got two priority number threes.
Mm-hmm.
You wanna make that a four?
Yep.
And then under parks and recreation, priority two, um, we do have those items, kayaks, paddleboard, swimming, et cetera, but I think, I don't know that we should have swimming in there, because I think we...
Yeah, we know that it...
It's deed restricted a really long time ago.
Yep.
So I don't even think that's an option, so you might wanna just take that out.
Okay.
That's a good point.
What happens if someone does start swimming in there? What, do they get arrested, or...
Arrested.
You get arrested?
Immediately.
Immediately? Like twenty years?
Immediately.
And then, a million dollars?
Right, there's not a question.
But first, they get dragged around by that boat that has the big plow thing or the big fan on the back? They drag them?
It's really bad.
It's really, it sounds bad.
It's really bad.
All right, good enough.
I don't know, that's a good question.
Our police jurisdiction, or, or is that DNR?
If, if we get a...
Actually, they, yeah, Kent County, right?
Well, if they're, short answers, we'd go down and go, get out of the water. So we would respond, so...
So it's the city would respond, not, not the DNR?
Yeah, yeah, correct.
Okay.
So you can swim in the lake if you are a yacht club member. You can swim from the dock.
Correct.
From their dock.
So you can't swim at John Collins Park?
No.
Right, but you can get on a paddleboard, paddle out to the middle of the lake and jump in and swim over there.
Correct.
You don't even have to go in the middle of the lake. I bet you can just paddle offshore and jump in.
Yeah, as long as you have a flotation device, right?
Interesting.
Is that right?
Yeah. City attorney says it's okay. Remember, we don't control the lake, so...
We, we don't control the lake, right? That's the DNR.
Control the lakes. Sheriff department controls the lakes.
A sheriff department does, yep.
And the lake's not completely in East Grand Rapids either. You have to remember that. Part of it's in Grand Rapids Township.
Right.
And that shore isn't owned by the road commission, so...
God knows what happens if you swim over there. I mean, I don't know.
Right.
The worst.
The worst. It gets even worse. Okay.
Okay, sorry for the tangent.
That's okay.
So I don't have any more little corrections or anything, but that, I just wanted to point those items out.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, city manager's office, um, as I noted, I'll be adding the climate action plan, um, to my twenty-three, twenty-four goals. Any questions in regards to that?
No.
Finance department?
Don't make stand-up?
No.
Oh, okay. Okay, so I'm just gonna highlight three real quick, uh, for the twenty-three, twenty-four goals. Uh, the first one is the third goal in the assessors department, um, or second goal, third goal, sorry, in regards to, uh, implementing the new personal property, property values. Um, the state adjusted that to, uh, exemption for personal property tax for businesses up to one hundred and eighty thousand. Uh, how that reflects on the city is there's four businesses that have filed that will change, that now are exempt, and it will cost the city about fourteen thousand dollars. Um, there is nothing in the state to reimburse us for that as of yet. Uh, the state has suggested that we keep track of it. I know that Wyoming and Kentwood are not keeping track of it, 'cause it's too consuming, but Stacy is going to be keeping track of that in case later on the state says we'll reimburse you for those differences that you would have collected. Uh, the second one, um, a couple meetings ago, we approved, is, I'm sorry, the second one is under IT, the second goal, they're not numbered, but the review, the backup service. So, uh, the city approved the disaster recovery plan, and as a part of this disaster recovery plan that will be finished this year, it will be recommendations for backup services. Currently, we contract with corporate technology projects, um, and they back up our server off-site. Uh, that contract ends in February of twenty-four, so as part of the disaster recovery plan, they will, um, the I three will give us suggestions of who, if we're doing it correctly, what we can do better. Um, and then we will reevaluate that contract, either with corporate technologies or another service to, um, fix that, or next, not fix that, but make it the best backup that we can have. And the last one is the first goal in accounting slash human resources.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the, the, is the first goal to cross-train payroll. Payroll's an extensively important process. There's a lot of, uh, detail into it, and we currently only have lovely Adrian doing that. Um, so Adrian, we need to cross-train, and now that we have Lori, um, who is knowledgeable in regards to that, we will start being, cross-training her to, uh, be backup in case Adrian gets ill and not get hit by a bus. I have to say that every year!
Win the lottery.
Wins the lottery. I did quotes, so that is all for me.
Thank you. I think that that's great. I just want to also, and I know we talked about this at the, at the, um, when we all got together.
Planning session.
Thank you! Just make sure, just please, Lori, make sure that you're not taking on too much. There's, you know, I know staff is very, is run very thin, and we appreciate that, but, pardon me?
I'm sorry.
But just make sure that you're, I just don't want you to bite off more than you want to, so thank you.
We have a, a big chunk of blank page.
I did not put this back.
Um, here, that I noticed, that's in the, at the end of the, the twenty-three, twenty-four goals, under the finance section.
Mm-hmm.
And it's blank. This is missing?
No, just, no, that, um, that was her last goal.
Yeah, it just ends.
Oh, it just, it just went time mana.
Yep, yep.
And then it goes on to the next section. I don't believe in the next section.
Sorry, just we had a formatting error.
Oh, okay.
Are you an editor today?
I am, I'm all critica.
Provides for some nice pacing.
Okay, thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, Parks and Rec, is that where we're going next?
Yeah, so the, the Parks and Recreation Department, um, has the, the benefit of having the Parks and Recreation five-year master plan, um, and through that process, the, the community and staff and commissioners and everyone that was involved in that process helped identify, uh, goals and objectives for the, uh, for the park system and for the Parks and Recreation Department. Um, so if, if you were to compare the, uh, the goals that we have outlined here within the, uh, within the master plan, a lot of the goals are the same, but then, um, we have updated the objectives to, to match, you know, current times, 'cause a lot of the, the goals that were outlined, um, that were listed in the master plan, um, have either been accomplished or in various stages of, of completion. So, uh, for, for this year, I'll, I'll just, um, highlight a couple of things that are tied to some of the strategic priorities that we had identified. So the, the priority one, the implementing the, the Parks Village, um, you'll note on our twenty-two thirty-three, twenty-four goals and objectives, um, that's, that's highlighted in, on a variety of those. Um, so for example, the, um, the third goal that we have listed on, on the page, so updating existing facilities to meet the needs and expect, expectations of city residents. And then also the, um, the fourth goal right below that, the developing the Manhattan recreation site and amenities. Um, so those are two of the, the top priorities for us this year. Um, the Manhattan, um, redevelopment process, we currently have an RFP out for that, for consulting services that we, um, expect to get back in, in mid-April, um, to help us kick off the engagement for the, um, Manhattan improvements and, and also design services for that. So those will be important steps for us this year in, in getting that, um, process on track for, uh, a next summer, uh, construction timeline. So, um, so all the things that go along with that. So having, you know, an extensive community engagement process and, um, selecting the right firm to help us with the, um, to do that, also with the, um, uh, the schematic design and bidding process. We, um, we anticipate, um, kind of mirroring the, uh, the playground process, so spring, summer engagement, and then design wrapping up in the fall, and, um, hopefully bidding in, over the winter.
Could I just ask real quick, as I recall, that, that process is going to kind of look at, it's, we're really gonna look at Manhattan as a whole and say, this is, as if it were a blank slate, right? Like, what, what should we be doing? Is that where we kinda left it?
What's the approach?
So, sort of is the answer. Um, so what we've done, um, to date, we did an analysis on the fields, uh, Manhattan five, the sort of fields, we're comfortable with that configuration, um, and things, and those were not programmed to be in the Village language for significant rehabilitation, but for MAN five. Um, so we have engaged, um, Prine and Newhoff, they did a kind of, um, or not kind of, they did a preliminary, um, revision on MCSA's plan, and that's where we told them, said, you know, leave the parking lot, but on that, figure it out. Um, we actually have, we have the revised, revised, revised version came in last week. Uh, we're waiting for some cost estimates, um, to see if the, those type of notions, um, you know, are within our fiscal means. Um, so, um, having said that, once we get those numbers in, that'll be something we'll start to kind of float amongst everybody. As far as this level of engagement, it'll be things as simple as, okay, we're gonna design the splash pad, um, playground equipment, things of that nature, um, look at our tennis courts, potential, um, pickleball options, things of that nature. So that'll be that level of focus. Um, but...
Okay.
We did, uh, we did engage Prine and Newhoff to kind of go look at, are there opportunities to look at different alternatives, um, just to give us some ideas.
Sure, interesting, great. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt, I just had...
Yeah, so the, um, those are the, the goals that are tied to priority one. Um, so for priority two, the improving access to safety to Reed's Lake, that would be, um, on the, the second page there. We, um, staff has identified a couple of options for potential storage and/or rental opportunities that we're continuing to vet, um, and making sure that the, um, you know, would be the best fit for the community. Um, and then the, the second part to that priority two, there is the joint facilities agreement, which is also identified on the, um, on that second page there, the, the second goal down. So foster collaboration, coordinate and partnerships throughout the community. Uh, so we're certainly continuing to, um, partner with the school district through that joint facilities agreement. Uh, we also have Prine and Newhoff working on that, um, our Remington Park proposal, again, to, um, to get some cost estimates for us to have conversations about, um, and just continuing to look at ways for us to kind of maximize our partnerships, not only with the school district, but also with our other partner agencies, with Waves and Aquinas College and the Boy Scouts and all the other groups that we have, um, longstanding partnerships with. Um, and then lastly, the, the priority three, so the, uh, senior and adult activities and programming, um, that would be the, the second to last goal that we have on there. Um, that was also on last year's goal, and, and we had identified some new programs that we implemented last year. Um, but that's one of our, um, opportunities looking forward for this year, is specifically looking for new opportunities for seniors and, um, like the active older adult, um, population that, um, you know, that's one of the areas that we have the opportunity to grow the most in the, the Parks and Recreation programming. Um, and also, as we're doing these park improvements, um, making sure that we're considering, um, those populations for, um, that may require, um, you know, enhanced ADA opportunities at the parks. Um, and so all of these park projects that we're doing, we're, um, making sure that we're taking a, a close look at that. It's, and as you consider some of the projects that are underway, with like, um, city manager Charles mentioned, the dog park having, um, getting started and, um, having enhanced ADA access there, and, um, the MAN five, actually, we have a bid opening tomorrow for the MAN five reconstruction, um, and we incorporated ADA improvements there, and we'll continue to do that as, as part of all of the enhancements that we are looking forward to.
That's great. I think that's really important. I'm glad we discussed it at our, our meeting, too, because, you know, the senior sector, we, that, we, we can improve there in a great way, and everyone is so enthusiastic and supportive of the schools and the kids and all the sports and all that, that we have to also remember, you know, that we have the aging part of our community, too. So I'm, I'm looking forward to see what we can do there, so thanks.
Okay, end of public works.
Okay, so, um, our goals and objectives for the Department of Public Works, uh, we, we encompass a lot of different, um, services for the community. So the, the first section really breaks, uh, down into, uh, what we consider planning and zoning related. Um, some of those spill over into some other categories, too. Um, the first one, uh, just to give an update, um, on, is the, um, RRC certification. So with the, um, uh, we've completed all the objectives there. Now that we've completed, um, the, um, the final requirement related to zoning ordinance, uh, amendments to approved, uh, site plans at the planning commission and other areas at staff level, um, we're just awaiting, at this time, uh, the official certification back from the state of Michigan. So we'll be on that, that certified, essential certified list, and that'll be completed.
That's great.
The next, uh, um, goal that I wanted to talk about is with respect to the master plan. Um, if we head down to, to that one, we're at the end of our, the five-year period for, for master plan, and there's various options that, um, that we can consider, and we'll go through some work sessions with the city commission initially to get, um, your feedback and input before, uh, moving forward with the planning commission. So there are a few different options that we can do. We can review and extend the existing master, master plan. Uh, we've largely achieved, uh, almost, uh, most of the items in the five-year master plan. Uh, we can look at a sub-area focus, other areas, um, or as I noted, a new master plan. Uh, just for an example, the city of Grand Rapids is undergoing an entirely new master plan process right now. They have done updates or done some minor surgery in different parts of their plan, um, ever since two thousand and two. So there's this twenty years old with some updates. I'm just letting you know that there are different options. It's not like we have to do a full new one, so...
Okay.
We'll have some, some touchpoints on that to, uh, see where the commission is at.
Great.
Moving down to facilities, um, the, um, pieces related to our carbon reduction goals, um, we've been working on, and, uh, is our solar, uh, power purchase agreement for our solar facilities projects. We did have an RFP out in late November. Um, we did receive a one proposal. Um, we did receive a few other ones, but they were, uh, they were late or incomplete. Um, and what we've been actually working on is, uh, the actual, uh, working on the power purchase agreement itself, which you will see very soon. Uh, we anticipate here in April, if not early May, um, to move forward, um, with, uh, with a facilities solar ray project. Uh, so that's something that we'll be, um, moving forward with yet, um, into this next fiscal year. It'll take us, I think, through the summer, um, into the fall, most likely. Uh, the next item I have, um, is under engineering and, um, is really an output from the engagement in the approved mobility bike action plan, uh, the Robinson Cascade Road, uh, side path. So this is something that, um, was really an output from that plan, as I noted, and when you look at the, uh, the community map that was, that included that area, that jurisdiction is actually in the Kent County Road Commission's right-of-way. However, with it being designated as a, definitely a priority for our community, uh, we also, um, noted that it's included in, uh, in, uh, non-motorized transit plans for the city of Grand Rapids, Grand Rapids Township, and even including MDOT. And with that, we've been able to secure, uh, some grant funds for two thousand twenty-four to substantially cover about eighty percent of that cost of that project. So that's something we'll be doing community engagement with the public, uh, going forward, um, and something that's on our radar screen, that's an engineering project. Again, two thousand twenty-four's gonna be a big year.
Yeah.
A lot going on. But that, that, we know when, when we're talking about where did that project come from, it really was facilitated from the community engagement with the mobility bike action plan.
Right.
As well as our partner communities that surround us as a priority. The next item I have is a safer routes to school program. This is a program that myself and city manager Charles have gone through with prior communities that we've served. And we've, we've started the process with our engineering consultants and with East Grand Rapids Public Schools. Currently, they're registered in the program. This is a, this is a federal government program that is, that is administered by the Michigan Department of Transportation, MDOT. And so the schools are registered. The next step is the, the schools are working with principals and teachers and getting their feedback, key stakeholders like crossing guards, et cetera, with any concerns that they have, things that are missing. And we'll also be conducting surveys with students and parents based off of what they experience every day coming to school. And what the program essentially tries to do is to either do an assessment of how we do business in terms of our, our school crossing guard program, the physical environment, you know, do we have appropriate signage with crosswalks? Do we, are we missing sidewalk? So we've provided them with a lot of the different studies or traffic control orders that we've completed, based, along with our, our crosswalk, crossing guard program, et cetera. And the output of that is our grant dollars that are, can be used for, primarily for infrastructure improvements to enhance certain types of crosswalks and to fill in those gaps where, where there's, there's not an opportunity to have a safe, non-motorized transit route to, to school. The schools will be eligible for about $50,000 that they can use towards additional programming and education to help facilitate safer routes to school. So. So that's a program that we're working on and it will take us, you know, I think it will take us through this, this, we're trying to get as much as we can get done here this spring with the schools. Then there's a back and forth with the state.
Right.
And we'll, we'll continue to update the commission on our progress there. Then down to lead service line replacements and I did add our other infrastructure asset classes in there too. Again, just updating the commission on stuff you don't see, so you know where investments are doing, how we're benchmarking our improvements and what those dollar costs are so that you're aware of what we're, what improvements we're making and doing. But one of the things that we really want to highlight, as the city manager noted, from a staff level, this is one of those goals that we want to enhance our lead service line replacement program. So we have approximately 20 years, now, now it's probably about 18, to remove all lead service lines. We've taken the approach to hydroexcavate each and every water service line in the city. There's approximately just over 3,900 of them, so that we can physically verify all those locations to know what we need to replace. And our strategy has been to replace, to the extent we can, in advance of road construction projects, obviously with water main rehab or replacement projects and then some targeted areas. We'd really like to enhance that targeted area piece and try to remove lead service lines well in advance of that required date by the state of Michigan. So that will be something that we're working with the commission on through the budget process and through water sewer rates and additional meetings to come in the future. Lastly, just into operations, just touch on the goal for alternative snow removal equipment and concepts related to sidewalk removal. This year, we've deployed some of the newer pieces of equipment, various ice crushing equipment and assorted calcium chloride applications on sidewalks. We've learned some lessons of, you know, with certain types of forecasts, what, what to do, what not to do with limitations of equipment, those types of things. And we're going to regroup as a team and, and try to facilitate some potential future changes to our response guidelines so that we integrate those different assets and operations to continue to improve the conditions of our sidewalks throughout the winter months. If there's any other goals, I try to, try to balance them out and jump into a few that I felt, you know, from some of our previous meetings or, or sessions were worthy of an update, but I'm happy to talk about any other ones or answer any questions anybody may have.
No, I think you, I think you covered off a lot.
Or for missing anything too.
No, I think you covered off a lot.
Did I hear you say something about the, the sustainability, that we were talking about putting out an RFP to try to implement the, the goals to, for carbon neutrality?
So.
Have a consultant help us with that?
Yep, we're talking on an RFP right now to, for a climate, climate action plan.
Climate action plan, that's what it is, yeah.
Unfortunately, it's made it to the top of my pile and then got pushed back down and whatnot. But just to that point though, is that is not inhibiting our progress on that. But moving to the, the recent approval of the gas, gas natural, natural gas program, carbon, the net zero that we approved, as well as the solar panels, we're working now, we'll be bringing forward in the foreseeable future a request to purchase of three demonstration electric vehicles that city commission identified. So the work to mitigate our carbon footprint is continuing, just the plan of.
Right, without that.
Right, operationally, we know.
We're still doing all the things, you just don't have the formal document.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
But will, but are we getting the formal document?
Yes, it's on my desk, so.
And that, and by having that formalized, what will, what will that do for us?
It'll be able to demonstrate.
Practical ways?
Two things. One, from a city operations standpoint, will, will show that we've either, A, mitigated our carbon footprint or developed strategies to fully mitigate those, that carbon footprint. The second component of that is what level of community engagement do we, do we want to have and things of that nature? So it's a two-pronged, there's not, there's city operations and what we do on a day-to-day basis. And then there's the aspect of how do we help encourage our community to take those steps forward to meet that goal.
And being able to point to that makes it official.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Lastly, unfortunately, Director Harold is going through another round of COVID.
Oh.
So, yeah, that's why he was unable to join us, which I'm okay with.
I know, yeah.
You know, so a lot of the goals that he's articulated are continuation of things of that nature. Two things that I wanted, he asked me to bring up, community engagement. We're continuing to make that a focus for the, for our department, things of that nature. So we're identifying different strategies. He's articulated, particularly goal number two, some of the things that we're looking at. The other thing is staffing, which the commission is aware of, continuing the public safety recruit position we've offered to, made two offers already. We're evaluating a third offer here and we'll make a decision if we're going to offer or not.
And all three are through that program?
All three are through recruits. Just quickly update, we did get some certified officers applying, but none of them met our expectations.
Interesting, okay. It's good that we have that in place.
With that, if there's any other questions or want to, as I noted before, this is not the last time you'll see it. We'll incorporate it in the budget and we'll give the commission an opportunity to kind of go, you forgot this or you made another typo.
Carrie will catch that.
Yep. Any other questions, comments?
Thanks for putting this together.
Yeah, thank you, everyone, for your thoughtfulness and for going through this. I appreciate, we all appreciate that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that being said, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.